For the Board of Education. And this is a meeting of the Board of Education in public and is not to be considered a public meeting. Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Mrs. Anderson.
Present.
Ms. Bryant. Mrs. Ellis.
Present.
Mr. Kilgore.
Here.
Dr. Turner.
I'm here.
Okay. Do we all stand for the?
What I do. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board members had a chance to look at the agenda. Is there any additions or corrections you want made? Okay. Can I make a motion?
Second.
All right. Roll call.
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mrs. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
And Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Okay. The board members have had a chance to read the minutes of the day for the meeting that we had on March twenty. Can I have a motion? So.
Go ahead.
Second.
Mrs. Anderson. Any questions? Okay. Can we get the roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mrs. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
And Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, please. Please. I just want to.
Oh, is it on?
and it's going to be stated with much consideration. Um, so I'm going to read what I have and add some notes as I go along. Good evening and thank you for your attention as I present my concerns to you as a parent of an Al student. I want to start by sharing some background information to establish my vested interest in the well-being of our school community. I currently have a student enrolled and two of my middle children have already graduated from Mount Healthy. While my oldest child graduated from the School of Creative Performing Arts, he was also an Al. Additionally, my sister has three Al alumni with her oldest child graduating from Walnut Hills. Together, six of our eight children are and will be Al alumni. I am also employed in the city of Mount Healthy, making me a mother, community member, and a vested stakeholder in our school's success. My decision to address you today was not made without consideration, conversation, and some direct experiences that have impacted my child presently enrolled. It is involving some general observations as well as some direct accounts. While critical encounters have been swiftly overseen with much appreciation, Dr. Ogden, I continue to be drawn to do more. This attempt has led me to be invited into some awesome spaces and connected with some wonderful educators, Mrs. Marks, Mr. Morris, Ms. Mallard, Mr. White, Ms. Chriswell, and Mr. Ambergy, just to name a few, and that is just a few. My appreciation runs very deep as education is a gifting and a call. Three concerns, three areas of concerns are communication, respect, and regard. Communication. This is a vital component of any relationship dynamic, and it is necessary with setting expectation and gaining understanding. It is my concern that a misconceived notion about parents not wanting to engage has been adopted in part to low or no attendance at events regarding students. However, it is my belief that this is due to the failure to coordinate events that are convenient for the parents to attend. While this is done in most cases around parent-teacher conference and open houses, it is not always executed properly in response to incidents. An example of this would be the organization of support for the students and families on the calamity day that was taken. The time was set during the middle of the workday while children were out of school. We have working-class families, some of which have one or two jobs, making it difficult to participate. This could be interpreted as families not needing the services or not being concerned. How can we address this moving forward? Respect as an African-American school, which we are. Mount Healthy is a black school. It is predominantly made up of black students, although Mount Healthy is a predominantly white neighborhood. As an African-American school, it is important to be culturally competent, especially as it pertains to respect. A role of them is you get respect when you give it. The idea that adults can just speak to our children as they see fit and then wonder as to why they respond the way they do is a professional development issue on the part of the adult. I have heard countless times that the students do not feel as though they are listened to, which is why they do not have. That one more time. I have heard countless times that the students do not feel as though they are listened to, which is why they do not have much to say. This is changing with the implementation of the student government body. I very much appreciate that. Academics are important, but how can someone learn when they don't even feel seen by the person trying to teach them? If an adult were to tell you to shut up to your face, how would you respond? This is something I can speak to directly, as it happened with my student who was told by Rosemary Hagan to shut up. In addition to personal incidents, my child had to endure the racial misconduct of, I'm sorry, Rosemary Hagan, who was found guilty of calling our students cotton pickers. My concern is that there is not an assessment in place to measure the character of educators and administrators you hire who have academic oversight regarding our children. This woman failed a whole class of students for two quarters, and this did not alert anyone to check. What are your hiring standards, and how will you manage this moving forward? Another matter regarding cultural competency. When you have not had to endure race. What to look for? What questions to ask? There are 280 and only 91 minorities based is reported. This is not to say that only minorities can teach minorities, but my question is why such a. It is my sincere hope that Rosemary Hagan never steps foot on our campus again. It is my sincere hope that Rosemary Hagan never steps foot on our campus again. Regard. It is defined as to be considered or think of someone or something in a specific way. It is something we all want to experience, especially in critical times. However, much like respect, it can be a two-way street. Have you considered the mental wellness of our students? How much they are processing through? Do you know that my daughter has lost three young people in less than two years under the age of 25? This is not including family members, all of which were students here. Do you know that any given day our Als are showing up to school with what feels like the weight of the world on their shoulders? This is where regard of our Als is important. You cannot assume to know the life situation of your student. I will allow the direct quote from a student to highlight this point. This social media account, "Hate Mount Healthy as a School. You should do way more for students. It don't make no sense to why we haven't had no candlelight balloon release from the school, or no assembly, or lanterns, or even a picture or painting to represent Damian's life." But y'all want to put everybody on virtual learning, or search people when they come into school, and want us to follow y'all rules. I don't know if I'm tripping. Maybe I am. That's the end of the quote. Because being safe, being kind, and being responsible works both ways, and a sense of worth is established by externally and internally in a person by those around him. My question to you tonight is who is listening, and how will you respond to our Al students now and moving in the future? I want to highlight this. I have been invited in spaces. I am thankful for the responses that I have gotten from educators and administrators to represent parents in general. But one of the things that is happening, while I look at this agenda, and I commend the work that is being done by the board and by the district, the money, the time, the effort, the organization, it's wonderful, and it's a great opportunity to provide the students. But what does that matter if your students don't feel seen by you, or they can't see you? This is starting to become a. Reaching. Conversations are happening at the levels in which they need to happen. Academics are very important, and I get that. But we lost a young man last week, and nobody paused at the school. There were measures put in place. I know that you all are working with the police to make sure they are safe. But while the group of. Can somebody look at the children? Can somebody reassure them that they are? And you all recognize that that was somebody's friend. Of ones that this is happening to. Our kids. Quit talking to them like they're. They're doing laundry and helping with homework because their parent is either working or working overtime. But when they step into the school, they have people who are disrespecting them in manners, and they're wondering why they're getting it back. My daughter has come to school, and she has told educators, administrators on three different occasions that she didn't have a locker. It wasn't until I stopped and went inside the school because they were trying to send her to ISS to let them know, "You all are not listening." When a child is talking to you, listen to what they're saying to you, because they tried to send her to ISS. It wasn't until that incident that somebody actually assigned her a locker. She had gone three months since school had started without it, and the only reason she got one then is because she got caught up in the sweep, and I had to address it. Academics are important, but if you don't have the heart of the child, you will never have the mind of a child. Appreciate you all greatly. I do. I recognize that you all are special. You are gifted. You are called to do what you do. I wish you all were the top-paid professionals in this country. However, I'm also a parent, and so I'm looking for conversation. I'm looking for inclusion. I'm looking for. Some things.
We just had the public input. We do have some presentations. Joe, can you go ahead and hook me up a computer, please, to the screen for something in a minute? So with our presentations tonight, I want to start by introducing Celine Quinn. She works with our performance poetry, and she is going to introduce one of our students who will recite a poem for us tonight.
Good evening to the board. Good evening to the board. Is that all right? I'm Celine Quinn. I am the performance poetry person, and I am here to sort of give you a quick overview. And good evening to the board. Good evening to the people who are here. We came in August with two poets, and we addressed the board on a very hot August night. And two students had been practicing in the summer their poems. I'm going to say it was a stone soup kind of year. And when we left, we headed up to the Ohio State Fair for a presentation, and since then, we went to Poetry Out Loud Regionals. We went to South Elementary. It was six students in sixth grade, and they wrote poetry every week all year. And in February, we performed at the Square Mile Coffee Shop, and 67 people showed up for us. And South Elementary is barred from that coffee shop because it exceeded the fire restrictions. So don't say that I said that. But parents were going crazy. How can we help with this program? So Mary Diamond called me up and said, "What's going on at South?" I said, "Well, I don't know. I'll tell you what's going on." She sent it into ACTLA, the Ohio Council of Teachers of English Language Arts, and ACTLA gave us $2,000 to buy literacy materials at South. And because of that effort of those six students working as hard as they did, we are now able to take that stone soup, which is cooking and brewing on the oven, and give each South sixth grader a Amanda Gorman book for graduation, compliments of those students' hard work. And then finally, we ended up over at the poetry slam on Good Friday in Memorial Hall. Cameron was there, and we were in a tough, tough battle with Walnut Hills and Clark Montessori. There were 18 people in the finals, and I will say that I've never seen such brutal judges in my life. Like, everyone was just like, "Oh, my God." But Cameron had to go second, the very, like, worst spot you can be when the judges aren't, like, warmed up and feeling good about things. But he pulled third place and took home $300. I will also add that last year in Poetry Out Loud, he won $200 for the school library for his placement as second in the state. So his poetry is just racking up the bucks. And we have the good news at South to spread around at graduation. So the final goal. With a scaffold from Amanda Gorman's book, and then I hope that Cameron will write a poem based on Amanda Gorman's book to show the developmental progression of what that looks like as a graduate in 2023. So more good news to come, but I've said enough. And I'm going to turn over the platform to Cameron so he can recite his spoken word. He wrote this poem, and it's fully memorized. You would basically never dare to even go to the finals without memorization, and you have three minutes to memorize it, and if you go over it, which some people do, they will deduct. So Cameron, come up.
Could you use the microphone?
Yeah. I mean, I could have got louder, but.
Well, it's just, they record.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, okay. And we.
Speak my name. I was a boy whose moms used to pray a pine. Speak my name before I'm gone. Clearly, I can't breathe, so I won't respond. Floyd in a maw. It's an alone life that was robbed. These men. The power that pushes. From black men. Let me say that again. The power that pushes this pen comes from black men. Modern-day slavery is something we can't pretend. I remember playing with dice and rubber balls, throwing them in a tin while the rich folk were too self-centered to repent. We came from shining shoes to driving around with 5% tent. Paranoia lives and dies underneath our skin. We're constantly losing Breonas and Bertha Taylors but will never have their original. The cruelty to young African women is pitiful. You will never understand the hurt that we've been through, being born black, seen as a criminal. Lynching and being beaten with paddles, shitting around like maracas and rattles, growing up looking up to police as if they were role models, a goal I was actually pushing into full throttle. Until those lips formed tragedy into words, news flash, officer empties clip, as if he's shooting at bottles. Considered a man but young to live a life was still a kid with a future that followed, but was disturbingly interrupted early by 30 bullets. Some claim it doesn't concern me, but each piece of heritage you take from me burns me. The last soul forgotten from its body becomes lonely. I feel the loss of equality. Family wonders what I'm running from, but behind closed doors, I can hear the loaded gun that spells my name next. See. Call the ambulance. Anyone, please. Screaming at the top of my lungs, can you hear me? And just like that, another black man or woman is free with the greatness of the white doves who flock together. My question is, if I got more, and I was sent to somewhere better, who? Who would speak my name? Who would speak my name?
Well, I think Cameron should have had first place. I really do. Cameron, that really was amazing. Let's give Cameron. You know, I think Cameron is an example of what we're pushing for across the district, and I have a polo for Cameron as a thank you for coming tonight. Thank you, Cameron. We appreciate your words and sharing that with us tonight. Our second presentation, we have Jeff Chambers with us from OSBA, and I'd like for him to come up. We have a very special board member that Jeff would like to recognize tonight.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Hawkins. Back about 20 years ago, the School Board Association started recognizing veteran board members. We started off recognizing those who have served 25 years in their elected district at the Capitol Conference. Back in 2008, we expanded that to recognize board members in their 10th, 15th, and 20th year. And then back in 2014, we started recognizing those who have served longer than 25 years, those who have reached the 30, 35, 40, 45, and even 50-year milestones, recognizing those who have served 50 years serving their communities at the Capitol Conference. One of your board members reached the 40 milestone a couple of years ago, but unfortunately, circumstances conspired against her in being recognized in front of her peers. Carol Ellis reached 40 years of service for the Mount Healthy School Board District a couple of years ago, and normally would have been recognized at the regional conferences, but those were canceled due to the pandemic. So what I'd like to do is recognize and thank Carol for her years of service here at the Mount Healthy School District. And I have.
And for those of you that may not realize, Carol started on the board in 1980. Now, a lot of you weren't even born that are in this room in 1980. So she has served the Mount Healthy District faithfully over the years consistently, and, you know, one thing that really impresses me about Carol, she's had so many experiences. I love listening to her experiences, but she is one of the fairest people that I have ever had the pleasure of working with. She listens to all the different sides, and she may not always even agree with it, but she consistently is fair and always has the best interest of Mount Healthy at heart. So Carol, we just wanted to take a minute to celebrate you and thank you for all that you've done. So our next presentation, this is a big night for us. Rebecca Brooks is with us. For those of you that may not be aware, Becky is ending her years at Mount Healthy, but that's not what this night is about. This year, this week, Rebecca Brooks has been selected as the 2023 OASBO Regional Distinguished Service Award winner for the Southwest Region. Becky will receive a plaque and a $500 scholarship, and I just want to point out, the basis of this award, over the years, Becky has trained many treasures across the state of Ohio. And so her work, obviously, is felt at Mount Healthy. And, you know, when I started at Mount Healthy, Becky said she was ready to retire. And I was like, can you give me a year, just at least a year? And she's given me three. And I consider Becky a friend. I am so thankful for the work that she has done the last 35 years. So Carol had just been on the board five years when she hired Becky, and, you know, as a team, they have just made a long list, long, significant impact at Mount Healthy. And so Becky will get this well-deserved award this week. We just wanted to also honor her, thank her for the work, and just recognize that award. So thank you. Did you want to say anything?
No. I'll just say I have enjoyed my new board. Every time I had one, everybody has voted me back in, and that's why I have stayed. And my daughter came through the school system, and I have enjoyed, and I have a great granddaughter that is coming through the system. So I have enjoyed my new board, and I have seen the transition from when I came on the board to school district. was in the reverse, white to black. And as I watched as time went on, that it kept changing, regardless of the year. And, you know, I want to speak to something that was what you said about the teachers. We have tried to employ white teachers, male and female. But you can't move the people here about if they don't believe you, and they haven't done. And we have to honor them until they decide on their own that they want to go and retire or go to another district. And we do try to replace everybody with someone that you think will fit our district. And sometimes it's always not certain. I know, I understand. That I agree with you one hundred percent. Because if you don't have a child's interest in what they are trying to accomplish, see, you've already done it. They are now trying to do what you have done. And I think sometimes people get blinded to that. They just think this is an irritation in their room at this time. And then they don't address the child. And I've never been one to try to address an issue right then and there when a person has an issue with me. I try to take them to the side and talk to them. And then, if they want to broadcast, that's right. I don't have a problem with that. But I have always been a person, and I was a supervisor where I sat, and I would never, never think of embarrassing anybody in front of their people because that don't work. You just alienate them, and then that means everybody else in the room wants to get on the same van, and that's it, and cause problems. So I think this has come a long way. I'm not saying we have reached the pinnacle yet, but the something we have been trying to work on is bringing students, teachers in that look like the population that we have. And I'm not against anybody else. I'm just saying, if you can't bring those people in, if you can't, you can't. Because I, too many times, we have thought we had somebody, and they would come and say they want to go someplace else. Because when we're young, you're looking for money. You ain't looking to spend a lifetime here, you're looking for money. And I'm gonna tell you, there have been several times we've had signed contracts, and they did not want to stay. And I don't want nobody that's unhappy working for me. I want you to go where you're gonna be happy. And if you, and if you don't think we're the ones... I don't want to hold you to a contract just because you signed it yesterday, and five days later you find out, I can go someplace else and make a little more money? I'm all for you going. I don't want you to be here and be unhappy, because that does not work for us. It does not work at all. And I'll get off my foot. Okay, now, this is just... Okay, anybody that does not want to stay for the rest of the meeting, this is the time you can go. I'm offering that to anybody that don't want to stay. But the rest is all administrative stuff. Okay. The first thing is the Grado Board Report. Okay, I'm the President of the Grado. And for the twenty-three, twenty-four student handbook is approved. The Board of Directors approved it. And the purpose of the handbook is to provide Grado students with parents' specific information concerning basic quality, procedures, and regulations. The Board approves the lowest responsible bid for the Scarlet Oak Phase One Rooftop Unit Replacement Program and enrollment trend. Henry, Harry Snyder reported that Grado Career Campus High School threw enrollment at the end of third quarter at two thousand seven hundred and forty-eight, with a retention rate of ninety-five point two percent. The district is on track to go and add or above ninety-five point four percent of enrollment. Harry also highlighted the kitchen program facility expansion for all four Grado campuses. If Ohio Governor Mike DeWine proposed the CTE expansion plan, approved by the state legislature. DeWine proposed CTE expansion plan and two million for career technical facilities and one million for career technical education equipment. Upcoming event, the annual Grado retirement celebration will be May third for fourth, fifth, and Scarlet Oak Campus. And the Student Recognition Dinner in several high schools representing all four Grado campuses. We can honor that dinner on May the tenth prior to the Board of Directors meeting at the Scarlet Oak Campus. Senior ceremony for the Grado campuses. They are, our feeling is who the new student will sign the oath, and that will be on May twenty-second at four p.m. at the six thirty U C campus. We don't have any numbers, I'm just gonna give you a... Uh, Scarlet. Oh, well, they don't have anybody listed, so, but anyway, I'm not saying they're not there. Okay, Project Search graduation is going to be in the complete workforce of government programs designed for students with disabilities, and it will honor students from complete program and ceremony on April fifteenth at Delve and Chappelle, and they did great. And the adult workforce Delve graduation ceremony will be soon held at seventeen, seventeen, seventeen minutes. And I want to highlight one of our students, but he's at Diamond Oak, Jahil Davis. He's a veterinary assistant, and he replaced at the BCA College Hill as a veteran student.
We have a student that is in the SPN program, and actually, she is very highly ranked in our class. And so she will, I'm sure, she's right in there to be recognized, but she... But we do have, as I've been emailing with her at Scarlet.
Okay, so mostly this month, it was just a lot of recently introduced legislation. A couple of the highlighted ones are House Bill one oh three, sponsored by Representatives Don Jones and Tracy Richardson, which would establish the Ohio Social Studies Standard Task Force to develop new social studies academic standards for use beginning with the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five school year. House Bill one seventeen, sponsored by Representatives Gail Manning and Philip Robinson, which would eliminate retention under the Third Grade Reading Guarantee, expand the grades for which intensive reading intervention is provided, and expand the inclusion of phonics and learning standards. House Bill one twenty-seven, sponsored by Representative Sarah Fowler Arthur, which would revise the law regarding the home education of children. House Bill one thirty-five, sponsored by Reps. Thomas Hall and Rodney Creach, which would require school districts to grant students excused absences from school for participation in four age and FFA programs and activities. And Senate Bill one oh four, sponsored by Senators Jerry Serino and Andrew Brenner, which would make changes to the College Credit Plus program. And again, there were a lot more that are recently introduced. These were just a few of the more relevant ones.
Okay, Laura, you're terrific.
Thank you. So recommendation to accept the schedule of bills for February two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Okay, see any questions? Do you have a copy?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
And you received your February two thousand three financial statement. I'd like to refer to it.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Do you have your copy?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. So this week, we have something that is new to our district going on, and I'm gonna let Lori Daniels speak just a minute on that. We have our first Day of Giving for Mount Healthy City Schools, and this is something we're just starting out, so anything is considered great. But Lori, would you like to speak just a little bit about our Day of Giving?
Hi, everyone. My role within the district is to raise money for our students, faculty, and staff. And we are throwing our first annual, hopefully, Annual Day of Giving this Wednesday. It's an online day of giving. I've been working pretty hand-in-hand with the Treasurer's Office and Bryce, basically to design something that our alumni would be attracted to. We started this off, our engagement with Homecoming. We're trying to throw more reunions and really listen to what people want to do within the district, and we need money to do these things. So we have sent out about three or four hundred of these Day of Giving postcards, which are on this back table, advertising what we're doing. We're heavy on digital ads right now. We're trying to promote heavily on LinkedIn, Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. And so the community is coming together on April nineteenth for a twenty-four-hour online day of giving. It's not about one person's giant donation, just what we can do as a group together to make a difference in the lives of our students. And so what we really need from this group in here is just help us spread the word. We need social media ambassadors. If you go to givingday.mthcs.org, it's very easy. You can scroll down, sign up to be a social media ambassador. It's as easy as putting your email address in there. And there's an amazing social media kit that Bryce has put together where you can share. You can change your profile picture on Facebook. We have banners for LinkedIn, basically any of our social media accounts. And there's even sample giving day language that you can use. If you want to donate the day of, we would love to hear from you. And if you hashtag worthy on your post, we have the ability to display these social media posts on our Giving Day site. You can make a gift in honor of somebody. You can give anonymously, but it tracks everything in real time. Right now, if you go to the site, you'll see a counter counting down to our Day of Giving. And afterwards, we want to do a really big thank you, and I'll be working very closely with Dr. Hawkins, basically, on how we spend the funds. We'll be very transparent on how the funds are spent, and we're hoping to build this into a yearly tradition where our community comes together to support and celebrate Mount Healthy. So if anybody has any questions, my name is Lori Daniels, and I'd be happy to answer them. But thank you in advance for your support.
Thank you, Lori. And also related to helping our students, we will have our golf outing coming up, which raises money for scholarships, and that will be June eleventh. So anyone that is interested in that, please mark that date on your calendar. June eleventh will be the day that we have that. And every year, they give a lot of money for scholarships. That's true. Absolutely, you can always make a donation to our students. But that's a fun way of giving back and supporting Mount Healthy students. Under item A, we have a few change orders related to the construction. And the change order number one was seven thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents. That is related to the training room scope changes. Change order two, twenty thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-one cents, added lighting, sensors, and power. Change order three is sixteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-one and thirty-two cents, related to power supply changes. Change order four, twenty-one thousand seventy-two dollars and six cents, related to fire alarm changes. And all of those are still in the contingency fee that was built into the project. I just wanted, they don't need approval. I just wanted to make the board aware and the community aware of those change orders. We've received some more grants for Mount Healthy City Schools. We received a thousand dollars for Visual Arts Remembrance Summer Project. That was awarded to Ms. Hager. Ms. Hager works with our fabric arts, and she has been working very hard to showcase different things with our students. These students will receive a quilt block to remember someone who has passed or someone that has made an impact in their lives. The Early Learning Center received the following donation of playground equipment. Eric Schmidt, who is the owner of Playground Equipment Services, donated six gumdrops and one sprint track that was valued at five thousand six hundred dollars. Ron Reedy, Amber Flannery, and Sarah Evans from the Kenny Kiffmeyer Foundation donated three musical piece equipment set that was also valued at five thousand dollars. And I provided a picture for our board members, but if you're at the Early Learning Center, you can see these additions, and our students are very excited to have them. So we're very appreciative of those donations. Item B relates to an organization named Think Law. And I had not originally planned to show this video, but Ms. Brewster, her comments. Sometimes I think maybe we need to highlight some of the things that we are doing in the school. So Think Law is an organization that is addressing some of the issues that you brought forth tonight. Catrice Kitay has done some work in our district. Colin Seal is actually the founder of Think Law. And with this organization, we are going through two different trainings with our staff and with our administrators. We have committed to a three-year process because it'll take a while to train everyone. So I wanted to show, we are actually doing in-depth trainings related to tangible equity. And Colin has made a short video, it's only three minutes, but it talks about what is the purpose of this. So Joe, if you, and can we hit...
I'm Colin Seal, the founder and CEO of Think Law and the author of Thinking Like a Lawyer, a framework for traditional critical thinking to all students. And I'm excited to share the announcement about my newest book, Tangible Equity, a guide for leveraging student identity, culture, and power to unlock excellence in and beyond the classroom. This book is already available for pre-sale, and I want to tell you why I wrote Tangible Equity. There's really three reasons, and all of them have to do with me being kind of angry. Number one, I was kind of angry that I just spent the last six years talking about all the work we've got to do to make sure every kid has access to critical thinking and that we unlock our kids' brilliance without asking the fundamental question of, do our kids even have the psychological safety to be brilliant? Number two, I wanted to question this idea that my mother, my grandmother, myself, all got raised under this mantra of, we gotta work twice as hard to get half as far. And so many folks all across our nation, whether it's because of the country their parents are from, because of the language their parents spoke, because of the color of their skin, because of the particular neighborhood they live in, have got to work twice as hard to get half as far. To the point where we've almost normalized a lot of these and that rules. And I thought, what if we imagined something a little bit different? But that third part is the part that got me really furious. There's only so much we can talk about re-imagination and reinventing without recognizing that whatever revolution we're waiting for in education... without recognizing that whatever revolution we're waiting for in education will have to be a practical one. But as I've seen teachers across the country do all these different equity workshops, do these different things, and implicit bias trainings, I felt like we weren't getting enough concrete tools that educators can use on a Tuesday morning to be able to create these shifts that we need. So tangible equity is an opportunity to obsess at the classroom level about what it would take to create the types of changes that we need to get to a point where equity can be realized in education. And when I talk about equity for the purposes of tangible equity, I talk about reducing the predictive power that demographics have on outcomes. So it would be my goal that if we can apply the strategies in this book, it could be part of what it could take to make it so that we can no longer look at north of the interstate or south of Main Street or that other side of the tracks as that space where we could often predict a whole lot of outcomes that follow living in that area, speaking that language, having that skin color in that community. So this is a book about hope practically implemented at the classroom level. And I cannot wait to see how educators across the country enjoy it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joe. With our partnership with Think Law, we will be starting training, actually, at the end of May. And we will train 100 initial staff members, as well as every administrator in the district. The next layer of that is that we will actually have educators going classroom to classroom to classroom to make sure that these practices are put in at the classroom level. And, you know, I, I believe this is a good start. Is it easy to fix? No. But that's why we are committing for a three-year process with this organization, because we want our students to feel safe. We want their voices to feel heard. And we feel like this is where we have to really take a stand, is at the classroom level, so that we can guarantee that that is happening. So, item B is the recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Think Law to provide professional development for staff, including the full year subscription to Think Law's curriculum portal. It also includes Thinking Like a Lawyer, that is a bulk, book purchase, and the virtual book series, $77,000, and this will be paid for with grant funds.
So moved. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is the recommendation to pilot flexible seating. This is the pilot of four to five classrooms across the district that would provide a full range of seating options as opposed to the traditional seating arrangement where students now face in rows and desks that are facing the front of the classroom. The total cost is $60,000. This will be paid for with title money.
So moved. Second.
Any questions?
Um, not a question, but I'll say, a few years ago, I was in a third grade classroom where the teacher had done this on her own, and it was really nice. I mean, they had, she had the beanbags, she had some standing desks. She had so many different options for the kids. It was really nice, and the kids really seemed to respond to it really well.
And it also plays into that role of students having choice and voice in the arrangement. Even in a typical, if we're talking and I'm at a desk versus in them sitting in a more collaborative way, the power dynamic does shift. So with this pilot, we are doing training for our staff. And then, the goal would be teachers would apply each year and go through a process where they could add their class to the pilot.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Item D is the recommendation to approve the proposal from Immersion Design to provide professional service for the completion of the design and construction documents, as well as the construction of an elevator and new main entrance for the administration building. The total cost is $2,737,500, and this will be paid by grant funds.
So moved.
Any questions?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E is the recommendation to purchase the new K-6 Math Curriculum from Imagine Learning, Illustrative Math. Laura House did a presentation on that at last month's board meeting for $212,120.
Second.
Do you have any questions?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item F is the recommendation to approve MSD to complete the HVAC system integration at District Office. All work will be performed according to applicable codes and regulations, including necessary permits. The total cost, $452,848.
So moved. Second.
Do you have any questions?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G is the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any questions?
If we vote no on Terry Dick, does she have to stay?
Yes.
No, we don't, because some of us can still be working.
Yes. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you, and that's the end of my report.
Okay, we don't have a session over. Do you have any open discussion that we want to have?
Uh, well, we, a while back, we started talking about, uh, revising or reviewing the board handbook, and then, uh, we got all caught up in finding a new treasurer for a while, and that sort of fell by the wayside. So I'd like to suggest that maybe we do that next. Uh, is the retirement thing? Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, not the same month as the retirement thing. So we'll, we'll bring it back. June.
I think that is in June.
Yeah.
Everybody still have a copy of it?
And it's, yeah. We can send that.
Well, the, the, the old one is online also, on the website.
All right. That all being said, the date of the next board meeting will be Monday, May 15th at 6:00 PM. I didn't translate.
Um, actually, next month is at the High School for Retirement.
Oh, that's right.
And I would encourage everyone to come out. We will have appetizers starting about 5:15. We have seven people who are retiring, three of whom have been here 35 or more years. So that is really amazing. So Becky is one of them. Um, I would encourage you to come out, have some appetizers, celebrate with them, and then we will have a short presentation, a small gift for them at the board meeting to thank them for your years of service, and then we will have the regular board.
Will the appetizers be provided by our culinary students?
They will. Thank you, Dr. Turner. Our culinary students will be making our appetizers. And so that was delicious last year.
Sure was.
And I anticipated it was delicious this year. So I would encourage you to come and celebrate those who have committed to our district and have some delicious food. Also, I do want to say one thing. Our treasurer to me is here tonight. Kim Hughes is with us. We just want to welcome her. And she and Becky have been working on that transition. But we have very much enjoyed having Kim in our district. And so, you know, very soon, she will be up here with me. But we just want to say welcome to Kim. Nope, thank you.
Just wanna make a motion. Okay.
Okay, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. You down?